Good evening and welcome back to the Smyrna Town Council meeting. We'll now move into our Town Council workshop. We have quite a few items for discussion on our agenda tonight. Before we move into our items for discussion, Steve, I'm going to put you on the spot. We do prayer for us tonight. And Kathy, I'll let you lead us in the pledge after the prayer. So if everyone will stand, please.
Dear Lord, thank you for tonight. Thank you for allowing us to come together and take up the city's needs and concerns. We ask that you be with the council and the staff that's assembled here and the staff that works day to day to keep this town running. We ask that you continue to bless our town, bless our mayor and our town manager as they lead us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Steve and Kathy. We will move into our items for discussion. Our first one is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for properties located on tax map 54, part of parcel 48.00 and part of parcel 14.00. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is the plan of services for the annexation. That is the next item on your agenda. This just simply puts in writing the services the town will be providing upon annexation, which would be all services except for water, which will be provided by Consolidated Utility District as they are the water provider here. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, we'll move on to item two, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation, R3 zoning of properties located on tax map 54, part of parcel 48.00 containing approximately 46 one-hundredths of an acre and part of parcel 14.00 containing approximately one one-hundredth of an acre. It's requested by Thomas Stephan on behalf of Wellhill, Alta Key? Close enough?
Alta Key is how I've heard it said.
Alta Key, there you go. Thanks, Kevin. And Andrew Waddy. Properties are located at the intersection of Rocky Fork Amble Road and Morton Lane, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, this is the annexation request. It is at the intersection of Rocky Fork Amble Road and Morton Lane. The proposed and requested zoning here is R3. The reasoning behind this request is it is a portion of two different parcels of land. It is to allow for the realignment of the Morton Lane and Rocky Fork Amble Road intersection. This is something that was, has been discussed and has been a condition of the approval of the PRD that's across the street is, would be called Blakeney. And so this would facilitate that realignment of that intersection and create a, or correct unsafe situation that is there with the current intersection.
Questions for Kevin on this?
So they'll build the road and dedicate it to the town, is that correct?
That is correct.
What happens to the old dedicated right of way over there?
The old dedicated right of way, when the new road is built, we'll have to, council will need to make a decision on what we want to do with that. Typically, we would have a request most likely from one or two, one owner of the, on one side or the other, for purposes of requesting that the town could claim that right of way or we can choose to sell it or give it away or whatever we want to do with it at that time. But I do, my understanding is an adjoining, the adjoining property owner on the other side is interested in potentially adding that to his property to incorporate it into his development that he's looking at doing.
Other questions? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item three, which is consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance 19-52 relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of properties located on tax map 54, part of parcel 48.00 and part of parcel 14. That is our housekeeping item that has to be put on during an annexation. We'll move on to item four, which is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for properties located on tax map 54, parcel 51.00. Kevin?
Again, this is the plan of services that's for the next item, the annexations is to your next item. And it is, again, a fairly boilerplate document, but it does put in writing that the town will be providing all services to this property upon annexation except for water, again, as this is provided by Consolidated Utility District. And again, the planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? Nothing's changed since last time, so.
Right.
Okay, we'll move on to item five, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on tax map 54, parcel 51.00 containing approximately 9.26 acres. It's requested by Sean Collins on behalf of Carmen Margaret Kaisman. The property is located at 8162 Rocky Fork Amble Road, and it is a second reading. Kevin?
Again, this is just the annexation and R3 zoning of this parcel of land. Again, the planning commission did review this, did recommend it to you. Nothing has changed since you looked at it on first reading.
Questions for Kevin on this?
More of a comment. I like this in that it's contiguous to R3 that's currently there, plus it gives a little, I guess, diversity as far as different types of projects in that area. And we're getting the 10,000 square foot lot plus.
Other comments? Okay, we'll move on to item six, which is our housekeeping item, consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance 19-53 relative to the annexation, R3 zoning of property located on tax map 54, parcel 51.00. We'll put that on the agenda and move on to item seven, which is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for the existing right of way of Kedron Church Road. Kevin?
Yes, this is, we are just looking at annexing right of way, not annexing any actual developable property or anything like that, but we are still required to adopt a plan of services. So again, we would be providing all services upon annexation except for, again, water. And the planning commission did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? We'll move on to item eight, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of the entirety of the existing right of way of Kedron Church Road, which was requested by staff. The right of way is approximately 1,400 feet long and connects Rocky Fork Road to Rocky Fork Amble Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, this is an annexation that was recommended to the planning, to the town consider this by staff, and the planning commission did recommend it to you as a part of the overall development of their properties to the east. And so this would be just the annexation of the existing right of way that is just there and where it begins, Rocky Fork Road over to Rocky Fork Amble Road. This would allow for the town to have control and, if any needed improvements, as well as, you know, consider closing it where the creek crosses it there. So we would have control of it versus the county. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
I think with the development right there, this was one of the concerns that staff had as well as council had, so I think this will help to take care of that. Questions for Kevin on this?
Well, I think it potentially helps us with any ongoing safety issues with the roadway going across the creek. And my understanding is that the church and the developer, and I suppose we are still working through that to ultimately determine what we're going to do there.
Right. No decisions have been made there at this point.
As far as closing the road, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, item nine is our consideration of a resolution and memorandum of ordinance 19-54 relative to the annexation of the right of way of Kedron Church Road. We will put that on the agenda. Move on to item 10, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on tax map 54, partials 12.01, 13.01, 15.01, 15.03, 15.04, 15.05, 15.06, 15.11, 15.12, and 15.22. And tax map 55A, group B, parcel 1.00 containing approximately 89.2 acres. It's requested by Jerry Butler to go from R3 to PRD. The properties are located between Jericho Street and Kedron Church Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is the zoning request that, you know, brought up the annexation of the road that we just looked at. This is for a single-family residential PRD, 249 lots. This is basically additional phases of the bank side development, which is, has been underway for several years now. Access would be from that existing development via three locations, as well as a new connection to Kedron Church Road. It did include the pattern book. The request basically has been amended to be compliant with the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance regarding open space and amenities. Developer has chosen to require a 35-foot front setback with a double-wish driveway for onsite parking for each lot. And then again, planning commission did recommend the annexation of the road. There were five conditions as a part of the approval of traffic study, which has been submitted and was included in your packet this time. We did receive it too late for the last time. We did put it in there for this time. We ask them to show details on the proposed realignment of the Rocky Fork Amble Road-Kedron Church Road intersection. Number three, adequate fire flow is unavailable from CD at this time, however, an upgrade is underway to meet those requirements. And then comments four and five have actually regarding typical lot and setback details and then development standards regarding three spaces versus four. Should be, we'd ask that those need to be corrected. Those have been corrected, and the revised plans that are in your packet do show those items having been corrected. Again, the planning commission did review this and did recommend approval of those conditions.
Questions for Kevin on this? Any concerns with the traffic study for you?
I think since this time, I don't know if Tom had any or not, but I know I didn't. They did basically recommending the, primarily the recommendations from that were that the Kedron Church Road-Rocky Fork Amble intersection, in addition, they were, of course, they were going to make some corrections there anyway, but it would also include left turn lanes coming out as well as going into that intersection.
Questions or comments for Kevin on this one? Okay, we'll move on to item 11, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 27P, group B, parcel 29.00 containing approximately 55 one-hundredths of an acre. It's requested by Justin Grandstaff to go from C4 to PUD. The property is located at 400 Hazelwood Drive, and this also is a second reading. Kevin?
This is a rezoning request for property 400 Hazelwood. Property is currently rezoned, zone C4 was just rezoned a couple of months ago. They have submitted a revised plan that they do want to, there's an existing house on this property, and they wanted to utilize the upstairs as a residence in addition to, as a, basically as an apartment. And then having the bottom floor still be the commercial building utilizing C4 uses. Did include the site plan as well with your packet. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin or comments? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item 12. Consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 34, parcel 19.00 containing approximately 12 acres. It's requested by Matthew Taylor to go from I3 to I1. The property is located at 500 Wade Harrod Road, and this is a second reading.
Yes, this is a rezoning request on Wade Harrod Road. It's for a tract of land that's, go from I3 to I1. The reasoning behind the request is primarily for setback purposes. I3 has the most restrictive setbacks in our zoning ordinance. I1 has quite a bit less requirements on that, and so because of the odd shape of this property, they wanted to request a change to the zoning to allow for, make it a little easier for them to develop it. The proposed use is allowed in both zones. That's not an issue there. It would just be for, primarily again, to allow for a better layout of the property. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this?
What's the property that, right in between there that's, that's open?
You mean?
What it surrounds?
Yeah, there's like four separate tracks there. They're all zoned I3 as well. That entire area was zoned I3 in like 1980.
Some homes on there now, is there?
There are, three of the four have homes on them. One is vacant and has actually been submitted to you, planning commission, for next week to rezone to I1 as well. But they've been, they've been, people live there and have, some of them have been in the same family for many years, I believe, so.
And this is close to that property that came up a couple of months ago, isn't it?
Yeah. It is, yes. That was requested to be rezoned residential.
Kevin, the PID next to it, if that was under just normal zoning, would it be I1 or I3?
Probably, some of that uses would be allowed in I1, but there is some manufacturing there as well.
With the setbacks and stuff, I mean, with...
The primary reason I think that I, that that came through as a pod was for my, I think it was parking requirements, I believe. They couldn't meet our parking requirements. I think the setbacks were okay with that, because it was actually I3 as well.
Other questions? Okay, we will move on to item 13, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the text to the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance to amend Article 4, Section 4.071(c), .10, common space and/or dedicated cross easements, and Section 4.170, development standards as applied to multifamily dwellings. This also is a second reading. Kevin?
This is our text amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding requirements for improvements in open space and what is required for any multifamily development in our sixth district or any, any PRD or planned development that has residential components to it. And these are basically consistent with what we were talking about at the joint council planning commission workshop back on September 23rd. Basically, we take out the current requirements and create new requirements that at least 15% of the gross acreage of a development is required to be set aside as common space. And at least 30% of that required acreage, 30% of the 15%, must be suitably approved to be usable by the residents of the development. And we also made a few changes on that, what we require as far as bus stops as well. So the planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Nothing has changed since you looked at it on first reading.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, we'll move on to item 14, which is consideration of an ordinance to amend ordinance number 18-17, adopting the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget relative to the general fund and capital funds project. This also is a second reading. Rex?
Mayor and Council, these are the 2019 fiscal year and budget amendments. The general fund and capital projects fund have some line items that need appropriated. There were a couple of changes for the second reading. I attached a spreadsheet that shows these changes. We appropriated another $16,000 to the event center and offset it with current year local option sales tax and another $30,000 to balance the transfers on the general fund to the capital projects fund.
Questions for Rex? Okay, we will put that on the agenda and move on to our two items. Our first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to adding language to the town's Smyrna Municipal Code Title 15, motor vehicles, traffic, and parking, specifically adding a new chapter eight pertaining to dockless small vehicle systems, and this is a first reading. Did I forget one?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Rex was looking, I thought Rex was thinking that was his, and I thought, uh-oh. Jeff, you taking this one?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Nathan Nichols has put, put in most of, all of the work on this while I was out. This is pertaining to, I think you've, everyone's probably just watched the news and seen the issues that Nashville's been going through with the dockless small vehicle systems. This would include the bicycles or scooters and those types of things that are rented or even taken for free, but they're basically parsed out. Just as Brentwood, matter of fact, most of this information comes from Brentwood and other surrounding cities have. This amendment to chapter eight would allow for that to be prohibited conduct and be, and it'll be used in the town due to the safety that they believe is involved with that. The police department or the codes department division would also be authorized to enforce this.
Questions for Jeff on this? I'm glad to see us get in front of this. I know some other communities have had quite a few issues with this, so I'm glad we're getting in front of it. If there are no questions, we will put that on the agenda and move on to item 16, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with the Tennessee Highway Safety Office relative to the Highway Enforcement Act. Todd, we are glad to have you with us.
Thank you.
We don't get to see you often.
I'm the stunt double for Kevin.
Oh, for Kevin. We only usually get to see you at picture making for our department, Mr. and Mrs. Claus.
I'm always better on this side of the camera than that side.
Gotcha. Good. We're glad to have you.
Mayor and Council, this agreement is for the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. It's for funding opportunities where they provide funds for overtime for traffic enforcement as, as well as some small equipment, traffic cones, VAS, radar units, lights for some vehicles.
Great. Questions for Todd on this? We'll put that on the agenda and move on to item 17, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Garland DBS Incorporated relative to the town hall re-roof project. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We went out to, we went to Garland. They have, they're on the state bid list to be able to provide roofing materials, and they went out to bid on that project with some of their contractors and came in with the lowest responsive bidder, including the two alternates at 331,357 by Baker Roofing. What they're going to be doing is removing the existing membrane off the top of town halls. We had several leaks over the course of the last many years, and hold on, just getting to that point where it is out of warranty. It's been up for well over 20 years, and this is going to be basically removing that existing membrane, putting a new one down, and then putting all the rock back in place.
Questions for Tom on this? We will put that on the agenda and move on to item 18, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with the Tennessee Rehabilitation Center relative to our recreation field area. Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you all. I've seen this one before, but it's the, the area next to the rehab center that we use for practice fields is about six acres, and we do an annual agreement with them. To do that, we maintain the property and trash and that type of thing and do the scheduling of the property, so it has not changed since last year.
Questions for Mike on the practice facility? Seeing none, we will put that on the agenda and move on to item 19, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Premier Fence relative to the purchase and installation of fencing at Volunteer Park and other town properties. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. We opened bids on October 1st of this year for fencing at Volunteer Park. If you're all well aware, we anticipate to move those fields back to 300 feet. So we also included fencing for various town fences that we have in the park system. We have a lot of different kinds, so when we bid fencing, we try to get an annual bid on the, on the general fencing. That way, we don't have to get three quotes all the time. So they've included those in the bid tab as well. The fence at Volunteer Park includes the demo of existing fence, the new outfield fencing, which will be eight foot and 10 foot in some sections, and then the dugout expansion. So obviously, we're moving the adult leagues down there, and the dugouts are pretty small, so we're going to expand those to match our others. And we did receive approval yesterday from the Corps of Engineers to do the work, so that was the major hurdle for us, so that was a big one. But this is, as soon as we approve the contract, if approved, we would turn them loose to do the work.
Questions for Mike on this? Steve, glad to see this?
Yes.
I had a feeling you would be. Item 20, approval of terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Life Point Church relative to the practice field area.
Yes, ma'am. Again, this is an annual agreement we have with an organization here in town, Life Point Church. We maintain and mow the practice area down there below the church, and we've been doing that for a while. It's primarily used by Smyrna Baseball League, but we have the option to, to use it for other, for other leagues and other organizations as well. We just asked for approval for another annual agreement with them.
Questions for Mike on this one? Okay, we'll move on to item 21, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Garland DBS Incorporated relative to the replacement of the Assembly Hall roof.
Yes, ma'am. I've been working with Building and Grounds Department, mainly Pete and his staff for this work, and Assembly Hall has some years on it. As Tom was talking about, we have a flat roof, a rubber membrane has come off, and you may not know it, but on the backside of the, the building is a shegel roof. So we've included both of those. That way, we have a 30-year warranty on, on the whole building. So they've got some built-in itemized pricing there, and if you look in the, the contract as well, just in case we run across something, when they pull the roof or some bricks that's loose, they can fix that and repair that. And we're using the Omnia Partners contract, which is something we did down at the event center. It used to be US Communities, and our purchasing ordinance allows us to do that. So basically, Garland DBS got bids from three different companies. We met them out there and went over the project with them. So the total cost would be $66,978.
Questions for Mike on this one? Okay, move on to item 22, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Dempsey, Dilling &amp; Associates relative to the design of the Rotary Soccer Park Annex Restroom and Concession Buildings.
Yes, ma'am. Again, we worked really close to Building and Grounds Department on developing the ideas of how to build a, some of our concessions and restrooms. They usually build them, we get them designed, so that's what we're doing here. We've been working with Dempsey and Dilling to get a cost for the mechanical, the plumbing, electrical, and all that type of thing. And we wanted an official stamped design with all the ADA requirements and what the town is doing. We felt like we wanted to, to make sure we had the proper plans to do this. This was part of the agreement with the North Roper Soccer League for the Phase 3 of that property over there, so that's what we're working on. It will consist of mainly restrooms. We'll have a small office for staff. That way, when they're working a tournament, they've got a place to go to watch over the, watch over the fields, but also in the case of storms and that type of thing. And it will be a satellite concession room, basically. They don't do any cooking on the outside, but that gives the soccer league the option if they want to sell goods and drinks and that type of thing on those three fields. Total cost will be $37,125, and it will follow the existing town contract. I know Jeff's looked at this for Dempsey and Dilling.
Questions for Mike on this one? Okay, we'll move on to item 23, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a change order number two with Jones Brothers Contractors relative to the Enan Springs Road West project.
It's here.
Pass the hot potato.
We actually missed this on the plans when we were reviewing this. We do need to raise the force lane there that hits Hidden Hills Lift Station. If we don't, we're looking at the depth being somewhere between 15 and 20 feet deep, and we can't do maintenance or anything like that on this line, so we need this change order to raise this line.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item 24, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Paradigm Alliance relative to the mailing for the gas public awareness.
Yes, ma'am. This is, this is, as you said, part of our public awareness program that is required. We're required to send out a, an annual mailer to customers who live or work near our gas lines but are not gas customers to alert them to the signs of natural gas, the potential dangers, and things of that nature. So we tried doing this in-house last year. It came in much more expensive than that, so we went to Paradigm Alliance this year to have this version.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, we'll move on to item 25, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with James C. Haley and Company relative to the engineer design work for the water line improvements.
This is part of the water model improvements that came out of the, the water model that we did. Jimmy Haley and his group actually did the water model for us and are going to do these projects. And we're actually combining two projects here because it makes sense, and we, this is on Sam Ridley and Weekly, but this will tie in on Jefferson Pike, so we'll coordinate this with the work on Jefferson Pike when they get started with it, and that way we don't mess the area up once.
Questions for Mike?
I do have a question on the timeline. I was looking on the timeline. It was supposed to start this month?
We do have budgeted for engineering design in this year's budget. It is going to be over budget because we're combining two projects, but construction would not start until next fiscal year.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item 26, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with CSX relative to the proposed sewer line crossing for the sewer rehabilitation project. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. This is part of the sewer rehab project, and in dealing with CSX, we have an existing line... have an existing line that goes under the railroad tracks that they say we do not have an agreement for. Now, this line has been in there probably seventy years, so this is an agreement with CSX to pay them the fee where we can pipe burst into the railroad.
Questions for Mike on this?
Where is that, Mike?
Front Street and Richardson, down that area. It shows on the map, but they don't have a written agreement.
Yeah.
Where we're doing the first I and I thing, which is down in the Front Street Richardson type area, it's right in that area. They show it on the map, but nothing written, and Mr. Pete's looked into it. He couldn't find anything, so we're kind of on the hook.
Bring back to nineteen fifty.
Something about going under that railroad, didn't it? Think how long we thought about there was a pipe under there and...
There, there is a pipe under there.
Yes.
They swear there is.
Jerome seemed that he's in it.
A sewer pipe?
No, 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 a water drain downtown.
Water drain.
That mysterious, yes, for sure. Sterious railroad. Okay, we will, any other questions for Mike on that? Then we'll move on to item twenty-seven, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with UniFirst relative to the uniform services.
Yes, ma'am. It's time to renew or, or go back out and, and try to do this again. This, this really affects utilities, public works, parks, and the golf course. UniFirst has done really well. Me, Mike, Tom, and Hal have met with the UniFirst director, regional director. The contract is up in January anyway. They are through Source Well, which was formerly NJPA. With this contract, we would get one month free service annually, new uniforms for everybody involved, which includes sizing. They'll lock in their pricing for the first three years, and after that, year four would be a three percent increase, and year five would be a four percent increase. Even with that, this contract saves us somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-four, twenty-five thousand over a five-year period.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, we will move on to item twenty-eight, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Allen's Air Care relative to the installation of a rooftop HVAC unit for Fire Station Four. Chief, y'all need a little air conditioning?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Council, we did go out to bid for a new unit, and we'd like to be authorized to let Allen do it. There's thirty-four dollars difference between Allen and the lowest bid, but we, with Mr. Allen's bid, we get a built-in smoke detector for the ductwork, and we also get a ten-year warranty on the heat exchanger instead of a five. So, we'd like your permission to have the mayor sign the contract for Mr. Allen.
Questions for Chief on this?
I think it's a good deal for thirty-four dollars. More.
Oh, thirty-four dollars?
No, more.
I was gonna say, the air conditioning unit, I just hadn't put in one that much. It was a lot more than that.
Shopping locals worth thirty-four dollars.
Yeah, absolutely.
But that's not why we're doing it.
Let's see.
I did have a question. So, on, just looking on the bid form, it said a five-year, a five-year, but you said it's a ten-year.
It's ten, yes.
Okay. I didn't know if in there, you wrote in your agreement, it said...
Alan Zook here, he has a ten-year warranty.
Okay.
And I left it out, and I apologize. But I appreciate you bringing it up, but everybody is smart enough.
Well, at least you know I read. I was thorough and did my work, homework.
I won't do that. I will not make that mistake again.
Anything else for Chief?
Chief, get a little test.
He needs a little air conditioning.
He needs some air, yeah.
We'll move on to item twenty-nine, which is approval and authorization to add Finance Manager David Edwards as a signer on the bank accounts. Rex?
Mayor Council, as you know, we've hired a, a new finance manager by the name of David Edwards, and we would like to give him permission to sign checks, do wires, ACHs, resolve any lockbox issues, and these forms allow us to do that, and we would like your approval.
Questions for Rex on this? Okay, we will move on to item thirty, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contribution agreement between the Town of Smyrna and the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor Council. Brian may have some things to add at the end if I, if I missed any points. Some, some time ago, we were approached by the Smyrna Airport, and Rutherford County Airport Authority, that there had been some difficulties of passing a, or not passing, they have a pilot that was enacted back in December of two thousand and seventeen with the Hillwood Development, and it was a pilot that was approved by the Rutherford County IDB, the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport, and also Rutherford County. Since then, they ran into some difficulties with just agreements with the property assessor. Believe that there is a mechanism in the law under TCA six fifty-four, one eighteen that would allow the town to make contributions to the county IDB in these said amounts that a pilot would be, that it would be set up for. The initial agreement that was proposed involved all four parties. However, after looking at that, we believe that we need to keep, keep it simple, and that state law allows for us to contribute monies to the county IDB, so the agreement will only be with the county IDB for this Hillwood Development, is which this one would pertain to. This agreement would allow, if there was other problems down, down the way, that we would have the mechanism of being able to use this contribution agreement to fulfill the, the spirit of the pilots that were legally enacted by the county commission. Within this agreement, though, we were pretty adamant and did build in that some identification protections for the town in case there's a challenge to this agreement, that any attorney's fees, things of those nature, or any judgments, we would be indemnified for. So, that's what we have before you tonight. Brian, you want to add?
I think everybody's aware of what, what's going on, and we would recommend that we move forward with this.
Jeff, I know y'all have put a ton of work into this, and we really appreciate all that you've done on this, so any questions for Jeff on this? Seeing none, we will put that on the agenda and move on to consideration of a resolution to set dates and times for the 2020 council meetings and work sessions. The only thing I have questions about, I know a lot of times we move that December workshop to January, is, are we all gonna be?
Yeah, there was a problem when we go into January, looking at when the Planning Commission meets and then when we would meet. So, this was the best resolve if we could make this schedule work.
I also had a question, just curious. The September meeting work session is on Tuesday night, the twenty-ninth. Normally, we're on Thursday.
Again, there was a couple of conflicts, and I don't remember the exact one.
No holiday around there. It just seemed odd.
No, we always do the last Tuesday or the last Thursday, whichever comes last, and that's the last.
Yeah.
Right?
That's correct.
Kind of why we're here today.
Um, are most of us gonna be here on December twenty-second? I guess is where, what I'm getting at.
Of twenty-twenty?
Of twenty-twenty.
Yeah.
I mean, I just want to make sure nobody's doing vacations around that time.
There are some elections.
Yeah.
Okay, but nobody's gonna be...
Y'all might want to go and vote on it now.
If you haven't already, look over those and just make sure that, it seems like every year we run across something that is a conflict, so... Okay, we will put that on the agenda. Brian, I know you have something under other?
Yes, Mayor, I do have two things I'd like to, if you don't mind, under other. The first one I'd like to, before we get too far into the meeting here, introduce a new staff member that's sitting at the table tonight. We have successfully hired our PIO position for the town, and I'm very happy to announce that Kathy Farrell joined our team last Friday. She's already digging in and making some changes for us, and I'm very excited about having her join us. Some of you may remember, she was the executive director of the Red Cross in her previous role, and I have to, in honest disclosure, I have to tell you, I had the pleasure of working with Kathy a couple of years ago with the United Way when I was on, in their employment. So, very excited about having her here. And also, in the audience tonight, beginning Monday, our new town engineer will be joining us, Charles King, and he is sitting over here to my right. We welcome Charles back there, and Donna's gonna be working evidently with him. We're always happy to have Donna with us. I didn't know we'd put her on the payroll. But Charles will be joining us on Monday as our town engineer, so I'm excited to have both of those folks with us tonight.
Great.
Under other, as far as business, you guys are aware that there was a piece of property, a remnant of property that was transacted by the school board, in theory, giving us some remnants of property out off of Big Sun Road, and I forget the name of the road there that goes up to the Rocky Fork schools. This actually happened about three years ago, two and a half, three years ago, when the first school was built, but unfortunately, we did not get all the paperwork completed for the quitclaim deed and everything moved through the process. Well, as you know, we've been in conversations with a developer that owns the property next to the remnant that we was, were to receive, about doing a land swap, pulling our two, two remnants together and then re-dividing that property. It came to light that that property had not been transacted to the town by the county, and it is now going through the process of going through the county commission. There's been several questions about it. We've talked to, to the mayor, several of the commissioners. I think we've got all the issues resolved, but for a statement of fact, they did ask, and I, and I think it's fair of them to ask, I want to put on the record tonight, as we go into this transition of this property from the county to the city, that the purpose of that property would not be for a profit of the town. We are not going to sell the property. We would be transacting this deal with the other developer as a land swap only. There's no money involved, and the end result would be about an acre point two to acre point three of usable property that the town will have, or, or desire would be at some point to put a fire station on that property, as we know that area is growing, and that would allow us, and we have looked at it. It is large enough. It's not as large as the chief would like to have, but it is large enough to put a fire station on that corner. We think it's in a great location, being close to the schools, and also to the interstate interchange down the road, and then, again, as it, as we look at the population growth out in that area. So, I want to just go on record to say that the property would be used in totality by the town for the purposes of, of the community. It would not ever be a piece of property we'd sell for profit. It's a piece of property that would be used for public safety, and just want to get that on the record tonight as we move forward with making this transition with the county. Thank you for allowing me to have that privilege.
Other questions for Brian on any of this? Okay, we will move into reports. Todd?
Mayor Council, we decided that we have posted for possession of police officer training. We have several spots available. I believe it's three, three, five. And then, we've also posted for telecommunications. We had one young lady leave and took another position out of town. She just recently got married, so we've kind of expected that one. So, we're looking forward to lots of applicants and a lot of successful applicants.
How would I apply if I wanted to apply?
You have to go to HR, and it's the second one down here. When Mr. Craig goes, he'll explain the whole of that Smyrna project.
So, we're gonna go to the Town of Smyrna website and go to job opportunities.
Yep.
Great. Questions for Todd? Thanks, Todd. Tom?
Yes, I just want to mention the weekly lane swan drive intersection improvement project. So, the barrels have been removed, the work has been done as far as widening it out, adding the turn lanes in there. There's some work to be done in January where we bring in the strain poles, installing those, as well as a new cabinet box to control the traffic signals at that intersection. If you are out there now, what you'll notice is that there are some times where the left turn is given a green arrow, and there's no one at that left turn. It's because the control cabinet is only set up for a four-phase signal, meaning that even if someone is there or not, it has to give that green turn. Ultimately, we're gonna be putting in an eight-phase signal cabinet that will provide more functionality if there's no one at those turn lanes. It won't give them the green arrow, and the straight-throughs will just go through. So, it is working properly, and like I said, in January, we will get the new cabinet in, and it'll function more efficiently. Stonecrest-Sammerly intersection, that project is finally completed. We have the new signal timing planned in the cabinet, and we've taken it out of split-phase timing, so that intersection has dramatically improved as far as the amount of time it takes to get through that intersection. Enan Springs West extension, the contractor's back on site, and they're building out a detour portion on the road. It's closer to the interstate portion that they're working on, right between the existing church and Old Rocky Fork. In the next two to three weeks, they're gonna be building out that detour. People are gonna be taking that detour around. They'll move traffic a little further away from the eastbound lanes, what that'll allow some room for the contractors to get in on the eastbound lanes and start building those out and complete those, that lane, shift all the traffic down on the eastbound side, and then ultimately open up what will become the westbound lanes, and they'll be able to build that portion out. The Sammerly widening project, we had a kickoff meeting about a week and a half ago with the contractors on that. Right now, they're getting their material submittals prepared. Can be submitting that to the engineers for review. Also, all the CAD files have been transferred over. We're gonna be working on survey stakeout. First thing to be installed will be the utility installation, probably looking at around January, February timeframe for them to break ground on that part of the project. That's all I got.
Questions for Tom? Thanks. Jeff?
Thank you. Mayor Council, it's a busy season for HR. We're about to go into open enrollment in November, so we'll be sending out some more marketing information for that for employees over the next couple of weeks. We're gonna be interviewing for our media program, media program producer. Kathy, Brian are gonna be interviewing several people this week for that job, so we hope to have some more information on that soon. We're in the middle of performance appraisal season, so all of our directors and supervisors are working on performance appraisals for their employees, so it's a very busy season for, for all of us as well on that. And we're in the middle of our United Way campaign for our employees, so full of something on that. Had a pancake breakfast on Friday. It was very successful. City Hall smelled like sausage for about six hours, but we had a good turnout of people, and then it'll smell like chili this Friday, so if you want some chili, come out and have chili with us on, on Friday. That's all I got.
Heard the baby pictures were a huge hit.
It wasn't my idea, but it was a huge hit. I give credit to Sierra Norman for coming up with that idea.
Todd, I think you were the winner. Nobody could recognize you.
He's a stunt double for the chief.
Questions for Jeff?
Not, no questions, but Jeff, just condolences from us. Lost your father-in-law. Just had Cedar talk to you about that, and I wanted to make sure you knew we were thinking of your family. I appreciate it.
Mike?
All right, thank you. Just want to say thanks to everyone for helping on our first ever indoor version of the Halloween in the Park. It went as planned, right?
Yes, it did.
So, Fire and Police, my boss, Brian Hercules, I know some of y'all were judging, and everybody was there offered to help, so we really appreciate that. It was, a lot of candy given out. A lot of people went through those doors, so I know the staff feels the same way. Also, we're finalizing, I know we've opened the Greenway Extension, but we still are finalizing some of the T-DOT paperwork, and a summary change order will be forthcoming. I think it'll be a deduct from what y'all approved, because we approved one of the change orders back last winter that was one hundred and twenty-two thousand. We ended up not using all that, so I think we're fine there, but just in case you see that, that's what that's about. Cedarstone Park is moving very... Cedarstone Park is moving very well, the rain didn't help us this past week, but we are moving. I talked to the turf people today, they're planning around November 11th, getting some turf down, but I'll let everybody know, I know a lot of people like to see when that's going down, or at least the process, and we'll try to get that out. Also, I've been asked many times about a playground out there, and yes, we are having a playground installed on the front side of the park. It will be delivered next week unless rain slows that down, and they'll start installing that soon after. We're also going to do a deduct change order on that part. We're changing out the bullpens to make those turf as well. They were gonna be one and track mix, which is kind of a rocky mix, and we didn't want that all over the turf, so for about the same amount of money, you can do the turf, and the same contractor will be doing the work. Nolan Drive, I just wanna say sorry for the mess, my truck was black and now is white, so I know everybody else is feeling the same way, but I do have to give kudos to Jones Brothers, they came out Saturday morning, done some work, and they've been working hard to keep that open for us and work on that as needed. They were on schedule before the rain, so we got a progress meeting coming up, so I'll know more about their schedule. Obviously, our goal is to get that in least asphalt binder before the plant shuts down. We're hoping to get it all done. But just talking to them, they did have the electricians on site today, a lot of the underground is completed, and they're hoping the concrete curb people will be there the next couple of days, weather permitting. So, if we can get that done, we'll be happy with that. Also, if you hadn't been by the depot, Pete and his crew have been working down there, so we got the footers poured, and they put the columns up today. We really didn't buy a shelter package, because we wasn't sure what we were dealing with when we dug into the ground, and sure enough, we found, might have found that 70-year-old line they were discussing earlier. There was a water line, we think it's dead, because when we were doing the work down there, we went around it to install a new water line several years ago. So, if you're seeing some work down there, it is moving, so we'll get back with the concrete contractor, we'll get back in there after we hang some more steel. So, I appreciate the work they're doing down there. Also, just FYI, Zama Park is out for bid. We've kind of put this in fast lane, and we got the bid open November 22nd, so that's the plan right now. I went ahead and ran that, just in case we didn't get a good bid and we had to go another month, we wanted to really have that option.
Great. Questions for Mike?
Mike, when do you anticipate leagues playing at Cedarstone?
In March.
In March?
Yes, that's our goal. We've talked to baseball, that's what we're, that's our goal, and that'll give us time to get signage up, some of the things that's not in the bid, that we can get better pricing on, concession equipment, PA system, that type of thing.
So, you're happy that we're tracking along?
Yes, I wanted to have a play day in October, November, but with the amount of work and some of the things we ran into, it's quite a bit of work out there. And we had, you know, we got backed up on fencework, and everything else had to wait for that. But I feel good about it, and the league was fine with that. I mean, we couldn't move anybody out there in the fall anyway. You know, it had been a lot of transitions, but as long as we're open in March, I'm happy, but that don't mean I'm waiting for March to be done.
I noticed the fence, the fence went up at Zama Park as well. It looks really good.
Yes.
I noticed that that, I went by there, I think yesterday, that's the first time I'd seen it. It looks really good.
Let Jimmy Stid handle that, and worked through finance to get that bid out, and premier fence coming there and knock that out in two days. So, one of the goals there was, when we did the demolition project of Tower World, is when we, when they got done, we got in there and got that leveled. That way, wouldn't a whole lot of work to do for the Tower World, I mean, for the fence next to where Tower World was, or the new park that's coming. Appreciate that, and I'll pass that along.
Yeah, it looks really good.
Mike, job well done on Halloween in the Park. You know, just to move that whole plan in a day and a half or two days, had to be a nightmare for you guys, but it appeared to go off seamlessly. I know we had a lot of people, I talked to some people there, that expected maybe 500 to 1,000 people, and I don't know what the number was, but it was far beyond that.
I had to hand it to the staff and all the volunteers and Smyrna Fire and Police.
A lot of rain and...
Yeah, it was a perfect storm.
They stood in a long, long line to get in, to get their candy.
Yes.
I know some of us had a pretty good time doing the costume contest.
Very grateful y'all handled that, that part of it.
I didn't notice.
We had you covered.
I was impressed with all of your staff specifically. I mean, the amount of change, I know you didn't make that call until 11:00, 11:00 a.m., basically, the day before. And the amount of work that had to happen to change that, and every guy, everybody that I saw was smiling, they were happy, they were running around like crazy, but, you know, it didn't seem like it was stressful, they didn't seem anxious, they just seemed to be doing their job. And it's a testament to where, it starts at the top. If you, if you had put a lot of pressure on them, a lot of stress, they would have been stressful, and it would have come through.
Oh, yes.
And I mean, I think it says a lot about how you're managing them, that they just felt comfortable just doing their job and getting it done.
Well, I appreciate it. They're some good folks. I think some of them were pretty happy we didn't have to stay out there at 11 o'clock that night.
Yeah, I think so. I think they probably were also happy they were indoors.
Yes.
I've heard a few parents trying to talk their kids out of it. They were like, "Look, I'll take you to the movies, we'll go to Chick-fil-A, whatever you want to do, let's not stand right here in this long line." But those kids were not having it.
It was a total surprise. When we were standing at the door, we kept seeing those cars come from both ways, and the road was, you know, a mess, and we were like, "Man, surely, nobody's gonna come." Well, they did. So, it just shows you what the Smyrna community is about.
Great community event, it always is.
Yeah, and they found out about it, and just everybody kicked into gear, so I really appreciate everybody that's helped out.
You and I had talked about it before, it was the first time in how long it had to be that we were...
This is the 23rd year of that event, and this is the first time that we've had to do that. We've been very lucky, so now we are talking about a rain date. We've been lucky. Most time in October, you don't get that much rain, but with the winds and everything intense, we just, we had met earlier in the week, just to have a little bit of a plan, and once I saw high winds and that type of thing, I was like, "Man, we're gonna do something different here."
Also, thanks to those ones that had the boost, that were willing to make adjustments, because I know there were a ton that had bought candy, and, you know, it takes a lot to put, not only from our staff, but from individuals in the community that are willing to step up too, so.
It's quite an investment on their end, and they, the people that already paid, some of them just said, "Hey, put it towards next year," and that tells you something there, you know.
We saw a lot of creativity, too, costumes and kids, and I know some of y'all had commitments, but those of us that enjoyed it, had a good time. Adam's family.
I was gonna say, Adam's family was the standout.
Elvis, I mean, we saw every character you can think of, and so, it was awesome.
We were talking to Patty was a couple, and they had their two kids, Luigi and Mario.
Mario and Luigi.
And they were from Lebanon.
Yeah.
And they said that they didn't have anything over there, that they'd heard about it, and that's where they came over here.
Luigi's number on his thing was four, but he kept telling me, "I'm free." I said, "No, you're four." He said, "No, I'm free."
Luigi actually won one of his area, but he, his age group, but he, at three years old, he ran up on that stage and stood there by himself. He was the only kid on stage without a parent.
Mr. Personnel.
And he was, he was working it for the second he got up there. Yeah, he was definitely a fun kid.
Any questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Kathy, we are glad to have you.
Thank you, and I'm so glad I got to follow you, because I am such a great example of why I'm very happy to be here. So, my third day, so not a lot to share, other than started with High Five Friday, and you fed me at a pancake breakfast, and, you know, got to attend the Halloween in the Park relocated on Saturday, and I'm excited to be able to tell this story to this community, but outside of this community as well, and working on some things to develop really a standard for this brand, cohesive standard for this brand, so very thrilled to be here, and thank you all for the warm welcome.
Great.
Welcome, and every day is just like what you've already experienced, you know.
Just follow him. He's everywhere.
Brian always is good for food. He'll buy you food each time you need it.
I did not get a High Five Friday, or High Five Monday, though, so we'll talk about that later.
He wasn't waiting at the door?
He was not waiting at the door. Mike asked me, that's the first question Mike had for me tonight, so.
Yes. He'll work on that, right?
Whatever you need later.
I don't get to vote.
I get to clean up tonight.
Kevin?
This is Mayor and Council. We do have another busy planning commission next week, with several items coming your way, including an annexation on the west side of 524 Rocky Fork Road, so it could be an interesting discussion next week. We are also getting geared up and ready, the MPO is about to update the long-range transportation plan, and so, next week, the application window opens up for that till the end of the year, and so, we will be working on that. In order for federal dollars to be spent on transportation projects, it's gotta be in that plan, so we're gonna be working on getting those projects that we need into that plan, so we can, work begins in earnest next week on that, so that's all I got.
Play in the plan, the plan, it's important. Questions for Kevin? Rex?
September local sales tax, we received $1,090,456. That gives us a year-to-date surplus of $557. September state share tax, we received $545,010. That gives us a year-to-date surplus of $26,716. As you know, back in June, we issued about $20 million worth of bonds, and Brian has asked me to do just a quick little presentation on the bonds, so... Why do we get rated? So investors will buy our bonds. It gives investors assurance about the safety and risk of the bond before they make that investment. Why does the town issue bonds? When the town can't pay cash for capital projects, we have to issue debt. Long-term debt of more than 12 years is usually obtained from the bond market. The bond market classifies bonds into investment grade or junk categories. Investment grade bonds, they have a lower risk of default and receive higher ratings. Bonds rated triple B by Moody's, or, I mean, B double A by Moody's, or triple B by S&amp;P and Fitch or above. So who rates the town? There's three major rating agencies for municipal bonds. Moody's Investor Service, S&amp;P Global, formerly called Standard Impurs, and Fitch Ratings. The town of Smyrna is rated by Moody's Investor Services and S&amp;P Global. What are the rate classifications? We've got three columns there, the column to the left is credit quality, and then Moody's, and then Standard Impurs, and their classifications are a little bit different, not a whole lot, but a little bit, as you go down the line there. And the rate, investment grade goes from triple A down to B double A in the Moody's, and we won't talk about junk bonds. This goes in and shows you a little more breakdown into the different classifications for Moody's and Standard Impurs, and the rating description. Moody's is triple A, Standard Impurs is triple A, and they call that the prime, there's only one prime classification. Then you get into the high grade, and there's three different levels of that, three different levels of the upper medium grade, and the green, and the brown, you have the lower medium grade. What is the town's rating? Moody's rated us AA1, which is the second-best classification that they have. S&amp;P Global rated us AA+, which is also the second-best grade. Now, we'll get, every time you get rated, the rating agency will give you some comments for the town. Our credit strength was a strong operating history resulting in healthy reserves and liquidity, and to translate that, that means big fund balance and good cash reserves, below-average debt burden, and affordable pension liabilities, so our liabilities are very manageable, and a multi-year tax base expansion, as you know, we're growing every year, and it looks like we'll continue to grow. Our credit challenges, tax base is smaller than similarly rated towns and cities in the state, and below-average socioeconomic profile. And I get asked this question a lot, will the town ever be in the highest category?
Go ahead and say, "By the mayor."
By the mayor. Factors that could lead to an upgrade, significant increases in tax base size, improved socioeconomic profile, and maintenance of our healthy general fund balance and liquidity levels.
Hey, Rex, what is their definition of tax base? Are we...
Population.
Just population?
Yes.
Okay.
Factors that could lead to a downgrade, sizable decrease in financial position, large increase in debt levels, and deterioration of the tax base size or quality. That concludes the slideshow, but our financial advisor did send me some statistics that I thought were interesting. Moody's rates about 130 cities and counties in Tennessee. Four to five percent of the Tennessee cities and counties are in the triple A category, and five to six are in the AA1 category, which is the category that Smyrna's in. Of these 67 city ratings, they rate four cities in the triple A category, and four in the AA1 category. The triple A cities are Brettwood, Franklin, Germantown, and Collierville. And if you know anything about the state, all these cities have elevated wealth levels. The AA1 cities are Smyrna, Knoxville, Bartlett, and Murfreesboro. He also noted, too, that the fact that we are the second-highest rating category for both rating agencies is important. He said, "Murfreesboro, for example, is rated below us in S&amp;P and equal with us in Moody's." And that's all I have.
Well, I just want to thank you, your staff, Brian, it trickles down, directors, and all of our employees. You all work hard every day, making sure we get the most bang for our citizens' buck, and I think it shows in the ratings that we get, I think it shows in the projects that we're able to do, and I just appreciate all of the hard work that goes into putting the budget together and then sticking to that budget. So, I think everybody up here would echo that, and it's not easy, especially when we all want everything right now. We want the roads widened, we want increased wastewater treatment plant, new fire trucks, more police cars.
More fire trucks.
True. So, we just all appreciate it, we all do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, one of the things I want to add to that, before we pass it on to Mike, is I don't know how fortunate our citizens actually realize, with our tax rate the way it is, the job that these guys do, and provide the services that we're able to do for the deal that it is. I've often heard HG echo that a couple of times, about what a deal it is, really tax-wise, to be a Smyrna resident. And there's a lot of attributes to our town, you know, we just finished talking about the parks and the roads and intersections and pipes under CSX and fire trucks, everything that we do. We don't thrive solely on property taxes, but I still think it's a bargain to live here, and it's people like these guys right here that help this system operate in a manner that we're not just throwing money at everything, we're trying to find ways to get grants and do other things to keep our town healthy and get those ratings, which benefits the town financially when it comes to debt and borrowing money. So, thank you, guys, for, all of you, for what you do to keep the town operating in a fiscal, responsibly way.
I think if the majority of citizens look what they pay for Smyrna taxes, I'm talking county, just talking Smyrna, they probably pay more for their... county, just talking Smyrna, they probably pay more for their internet and cable on a monthly basis than they do for their taxes for, for the town. And you look at all that that includes, so I would echo that one.
We appreciate the effort.
Yep.
Rex, can I ask you a question? You, I hear you say that our debt has a ra, it has a impact on our rating, is that correct?
It's one of the criteria that they look at.
Will this bond that we've taken out, will that have an impact on it later on down the road, now that we have more debt?
No, even with that, our debt is extremely low.
Okay.
Mike?
Well, I feel kinda bad, you know, Rex talks about all this cool Moody's stuff, and Mike gets all this fun stuff, and I get to talk about sewer and gas.
Somebody's gotta do it.
Somebody's gotta do it. Uh, wastewater plant expansion, everything's going well, uh, moving along good. Guess everybody realizes it started blasting. Uh, we did post that on the website, uh, social media, Channel 3. Um, that'll continue for a while, so, uh, but it's part of the project, so we're, we're moving on there. Uh, the gas AMI project's starting to roll downhill pretty quickly. Uh, we've met with Itron and, uh, United Systems multiple times now, and they're getting ready to order the collectors, there'll be twenty-two collectors that this network is built through. Most of them will go on town-owned assets, but there will be some on some middle Tennessee electric power poles. So, once we start moving there and get the network built, uh, we'll start changing out the modules, or they will, on all the gas meters to build to remotely connect to those, so it's moving downhill pretty quickly.
Great. Questions for Mike? Chief?
Mayor, Council, I'd, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank everybody that came out to our open house at the, uh, end of Fire Prevention Week. We had a very, very good turnout. Also, I'd like to let everybody know that on November the sixteenth, our honor guard will be presenting the colors of the Predators game. So, uh, if you, uh, it is gonna be televised, so you might get to see them on, uh, television as well.
Tell them to stay on the carpet.
Yes, ma'am.
Questions?
Chief, you wanna tell them about the pictures you sent me yesterday? From Marion?
Pretty exciting.
Uh, yes, Spartan Motors had finished the cabin chassis on the, uh, new apparatus and got it to Marion, and, uh, Marion is starting work building the, uh, the body for the truck.
And remind us all how long it usually takes for a fire truck to be from start to finish?
This one was, it was gonna be around three hundred and eighty days, I believe it was.
They don't run as fast as it does down Nissan's line, does it?
No ma'am. Takes a little bit longer.
Little bit longer. Questions for Chief?
Chief, the event was a huge success. It's always fun to come out, but it's always nice seeing those little kids out there enjoying the day, and families out there, and, um, you couldn't have asked for better weather.
No, no, no.
Ms. Diane?
Well, I wanna tell Mike strange, I helped him out the other day, 'cause I had a customer ask me what the difference between water and sewer was. And I was able to explain that.
Gas.
And you didn't have to get that call.
I appreciate that.
I thought I'd heard everything thirty-eight years ago, and I never heard that.
The taste.
Smell and taste.
Our department has issued their free business license, and I just wanna let all you people out there that are conducting businesses, I'm after ya. We are beating the bushes. Tammy and I, we've done ride-alongs. I drive the getaway car and she goes in.
Oh, you're the heat. You're the heat, right?
So, I just want you to look in the know that they need to come and see me, 'cause we will find, along with the help from Hoagies and, uh, Land.
Ms. Diane and Tammy after ya.
Yes. You know, I drove the getaway car.
Brian?
Mayor, Council, I have a couple of things I'm not sure I can top. I don't know, I'm, I'm gonna try to top some of this stuff. I've got one on here that may be enjoyable. Um, I've got a couple of videos that we're gonna show, uh, quickly up on the screen, but I did wanna recognize that November the eleventh at eleven o'clock, uh, at the Captain Jeff Kuss Memorial, again, the Town of Smyrna and the BFW, uh, will be celebrating our Veterans Day event. Uh, hope everybody can come out and join us on that day. Uh, it's, it's a very special time. I know last year, uh, we had, uh, probably about a hundred and fifty people join us, and, uh, it's something to, uh, the, the venue just adds to the excitement of the day and, and really makes the heart tug for our veterans. And, uh, I hope people come out and join us. Also, I wanted to, uh, announce that, uh, in honor of Addie, uh, which is, uh, Mr. Rayburn's daughter, uh, we will be doing a blood drive, participating in a blood drive, uh, at Town of Smyrna Event Center. That's Thursday, November the twenty-first from eleven AM to five PM. You can go online to the American Red Cross site, uh, for Rutherford County and, uh, sign up for that. Or I believe you can go by the Town Center and they're, uh, working a, uh, signup sheet, uh, for you. So, I hope everybody can participate in that. Uh, the next thing I wanted to do is just, uh, real quick, you know, we've been having a lot of fun with this food drive. I wanted to announce tonight that, uh, the town has collected, uh, either in items or in, uh, uh, cash donations, ten thousand six hundred and forty-two current items collected. And I think we've got a, a slide of the names of all the folks that have, uh, so far, and there we go, uh, a big thank you to this group of people, uh, for coming out and participating. Now, it's not over, we're continuing to work that. So, I know there'll be some more names added to that, but, uh, we do appreciate everybody that so far has, has made a donation, uh, going forward towards our, uh, Christmas parade. Wanted to remind everybody that, uh, this weekend is daylight savings time. Don't forget to turn your clocks back one hour Sunday night before you go to bed. Um, you may, let's see, if you don't turn it back, you'll be at church a little early, right? Uh, so you'll get to make coffee at church Sunday morning if you don't, don't participate in moving your clocks back. Also, wanted to recognize that our coats for clerks, uh, our town clerk, uh, has this program every year through the month of November, and that starts November the first. And you can see, uh, the s, collection sites, uh, there at the bottom, but any gently-used or new children's, uh, K through twelve coats, hats, and gloves. And I tell you, it's sad that we have so many children in our community that depend on this, uh, would, would be some cold winters for these kids. Uh, I, I remember a couple of years ago, Whit Turnbull, a good friend of mine, and many of you know as well, uh, was driving to work one morning, saw a kid at the, you know, the bus stop without a coat. And, uh, they began to do this with NTSU, and then our clerk, I'm real proud that our clerks are getting on board with this and adding to that. There are people in our community that needs his help, so. I know we've already talked about it, but I, I just, from a town manager's seat, just wanted to recognize not just Parks and Rec, but the Event Center staff, the police and fire for Halloween in the Park slash SOAC. Um, I think there was a little over twenty-five hundred people actually participated. Now, I know that doesn't meet the numbers that we've had at the park itself, but nobody was expecting twenty-five hundred people to show up. And at three o'clock, well, two forty-five, Mike and I looked out, and they were lined up out into the field, going towards the hotel at the back of the property. And that was great, 'cause people were there to have fun. But when it was a monsoon and it was pouring down rain, and that line was still to that same spot, it was amazing, 'cause nobody was leaving. I think I saw three families, uh, actually leave and say, "Hey, we're just not gonna stand in the line, or we're not gonna weather the storm." But that was about all I saw that left. And the people came, had a great time, uh, and then also for Town Council members that were there that participated in the judging and, and participated in the, uh, costume event, it was just a, it was hard for me. I wanted to be at all the, all the places. I wanted to watch the kids getting candy. I wanted to be at the, uh, costume celebration. I, and I wanted to be outside to, to be with the people and watch the excitement, uh, as they prepared. So, uh, just thank you to everybody, uh, for adapting and changing on the fly and making something that could've been a disaster really become a great event for us. Also, I had the opportunity Sunday to attend the Grove Church Community Day. Uh, we had several, uh, local, uh, folks, uh, from the county and from Laverne, uh, participate, and I just wanna say thank you to, uh, Pastor York and his, uh, congregation for honoring us and allowing us to be there on Sunday. Kathy mentioned, uh, last Friday was her first day, and six forty-five, we started out with a High Five Friday. I'm not sure if that, uh, affected my not feeling very well over the weekend, but I don't think I got to the, uh-
Sanitizer.
The sanitizer fast enough. Uh, but it was a great day. I tell you, if you've never had the opportunity, find a way to get hooked up in one of these schools and participate in this event. It is so much fun, uh, to watch the children come in, and some of them are grumpy in the mornings, and then all, once you see a smile on their face, and they run through the gauntlet and give the high fives, and it's just an enjoyable time, so. Do wanna remind everybody, Town Hall offices will be closed on Monday, November the eleventh in observance for Veterans Day. Uh, so the offices will be closed, but we will be participating in our Veterans Day event at eleven o'clock. Uh, a couple of things I just wanted to mention to, to the community, uh, this time of year, uh, we see a lot of yard sales. And I know I've seen a lot of posts about people wondering where the yard sale signs have gone. Um, we do have an ordinance that does not allow yard sale signs or any kind of signs in the right of way. So, uh, if, if you're having yard sales, please work with your neighbors, get them back off the right of way, ask the neighbor to allow you to put it in their yard on a corner for a temporary basis, those kind of things. But unfortunately, uh, if they're out and the coats enforcement folks go by, those signs will be picked up. So, I just wanna remind everybody, there is an ordinance, try to obey the ordinance and, and do the best you can. Also, um, a hunter friend of mine reminded me, this is a season for the deer population that is called rut. And it's when the, the buck deers like to chase the doe deers through the neighborhoods and all around. Uh, it's mating season. Uh, and sometimes our deers don't, uh, read the signs and know that they're not supposed to be on the roads. So, please, slow down if you're in the community. Uh, we do have a lot of deer population, uh, that, that are out there, uh, they're in the city, uh, and unfortunately, you know, with us being as close we are to the lake, we sit up and see a lot of deer. We've had five deers already this week that were killed on the road. Uh, we, unfortunate for the deers, but also that involves an accident with the car, so please be careful. I knew that there would be some snickers on this one.
I didn't know if that was for me or not.
No ma'am, I know you've actually had one of those opportunities recently, so be, we just want people to be very careful.
That deer did not read the sign, did it?
He did not read the sign.
No, they didn't.
They don't read the signs very well. But, uh, I, it, some comedy relief here, but honestly, people be careful, uh, they're out there, and just slow down, especially at dusk and in early morning, uh, when the deer are moving. Uh, they don't know the difference in the road and the woods, they, they go crazy, so. Uh, this Thursday night, this is Tuesday night, two nights away, will be Halloween. Uh, we've had a couple of calls to the, to the office wanting to know if we were changing the date of Halloween. Halloween is a national holiday, we do not impose what day Halloween will be observed on, it's on Halloween night, but that will be-
I thought they moved it to yesterday, it's over with.
It's, no, no, I haven't gotten enough candy. My house is already over with yet. Uh, but Halloween will be this Thursday night. And again, I just wanna warn everybody, the kids are gonna be out, it's getting dark early, uh, be careful on the road, especially in the neighborhoods, uh, slow down, make sure your lights are on, uh, watch for these children, uh, they're gonna be out enjoying Halloween. Now, they may be carrying umbrellas, it may be easier to see them, uh, they're projecting some rain, but, uh, do wanna make sure everybody is aware of that. The last thing I wanted, uh, to share with you, just, as we look across the panel tonight, I don't know, there's a couple of folks missing, uh, just wanted to point out, one of them was Hal Loughlin, uh, from our golf course. And I gave Hal the night off, because tonight is his thirty-sixth wedding anniversary, and he to, promised me if I let him leave early, he would take his wife somewhere besides Crystal for dinner. So, I'm, I'm looking for an account of a really well-done meal for this thirty-sixth anniversary. But Hal, uh, you and your wife, we wish you the very best. So, thank you, uh, Council and Mayor for my comments.
Jeff?
Just, uh, you've already spoken about it, but ask everybody to remember Veterans Day, it's an important time to stop and think about it and just, instead of a day off, also kind of celebrate the reason that you're there.
Raquel?
Um, a couple of things. Um, the High Five Friday was a lot of fun, um, was glad to be able to get out and do that, uh, with the kids. Um, and we also had a business before hours at Carpe Artist, I don't know if you were gonna talk about that minute or not, but, um, it was, I think, very well-attended, and there were a lot of different people from all across the community that attended, and I was glad to see everyone come out and support that. Um, and I'm glad that Halloween in, at the SOAC, as we'll call it this year, was such a success. And also, welcome to Charles and Kathy, condolences to Jeff and to Captain Spearman. Um, and lastly, just to echo what Brian was saying about this being Halloween on Thursday, so I hope everyone has a safe Halloween, um, on this Thursday, and watch out for all the kids in the neighborhood. That's it for me.
HG?
Um, I've been at town, so I missed all of these events, and I just, I really feel left out. I mean, it sounds like everything just really went off well, and sometimes you just, you hate to miss these things, you know? But I wanna wish my nephew Clay a happy birthday, that's today, and my cousin, um, Sharon, a happy birthday, both of them fall today. Now, one's in Colorado and one's in Texas, so they're not going to hear this, but you can rest assured that my mother will pass it along that I said this year, so, thank you.
Tim?
Yeah, to kinda tag on with Raquel at the Business Before Hours, it's, it's really neat, if I'd say, if I can even say that up here, to hear the comments from folks from Murfreesboro and Laverne and Rutherford County about the Depot District, and how they see that as a real bonus, and it's, you know, it's turning into one of those, um, showcases for our community. And so, anytime we can have a, an event there that highlights it, I think it's good for our town. And, uh, although I did wish her happy birthday on her birthday, officially wish Donna, uh, happy thirty-ninth birthday, uh, and we had a, we had a good day.
Good.
So, happy birthday to her.
Happy birthday to Mrs. Che, Mrs. Chief.
Jerry?
Um, just a few things, uh, again, I, I know all, it's been mentioned quite a few times before, but, um, the, uh, the Halloween at the SOAC, uh, was really a, a great event. We had a, we had a fantastic time, and just thanks to everybody that, that, uh, made that happen, uh, the Fire Department, the, uh, Police Department, uh, Parks and Rec, SOAC, all of those groups, they just did a fantastic job. We had, we had a great time, so just, uh, thank you for all that, uh, that hard work. Um, Kathy, uh, we wanna welcome you as, as well, so glad to, so glad to have you, and, um, Charles, I called him Charles Neal when we were, when we were growing up, so I don't know if anybody calls you Charles Neal anymore or not, but, uh, Charles, Charles Neal, welcome.
Thank you.
Great.
Yep, um, really nothing that hasn't already been said, obviously welcome. Um, we very happy to have you at the, uh, High Five Friday, you balanced out our gauntlet there, and a Charles welcome, I hope, uh, hope it didn't work you too hard, but we have plans to, so just be ready. Um, you know, we talked about the SOAC and, and how well Halloween and the park went off, but nobody has mentioned our great emcee that we had. Um, Mark emceed the event, uh, alone this year, and, uh, did a very good job. Um, the kids were, the kids were often looking up at him like he was in a Halloween costume, because he's so much taller than them.
Well, the Addams Family was there, and I think they thought I was Lark.
Yeah. So, I did notice as it, from the judges' table, that several kids were a little bit like, "Man, he's up there." But, uh, but yeah, he, he did, he did an excellent job, I appreciate your leadership, Mark.
And great judges too, by the way.
Well, it was at least one.
That's a tough job.
The judging's harder than my job.
It, it really was. We actually had, with it being indoors, um, the first, second, third is decided by applause. With it being indoors, there were several times that the applause sounded exactly the same for all three candidates, because the room was so tight. So, uh, we, we were struggling a couple of times, we had to have, at least one time, we had to do it all again to try to figure out a winner. Uh, but yeah, we had a, had a really good time. It was, um, some very good costumes this year.
Great. Mark?
Well, thank you for that, and you guys did an awesome job too with all that difficult judging. Jerry, you were great support back there as well, so you and Patty both. Um, High Five at Smyrna High School, or Smyrna Elementary School, um, of course, my wife Connie works there, so I know without a shadow of a doubt how much they appreciated it. That carries back to the house, and she's, "Oh, they have a ball with that." So, everybody that participates in that, just know it can kinda make a kid's day from the time they get there. And, uh, also, you know, I was reminded tonight, Tiffany showed me the little scrapbook of, uh, some of the reading in the schools that we do, and if you haven't had a chance to see it yet, see me, I, I need to point some things out in that book that are just fun, they're so hilarious, but, um, we, uh, we always- But we, we always enjoy that, and, you know, our schools are, they're a prize to us, really. We all, all of us here, we, and you guys, the Fire Department, police, everybody likes to get involved in this and go read and give high fives and everything. So, thank you to the whole town for being involved and trying to raise our children up to enjoy their day at school. Kathy, thank you for being there, welcome. Charles, welcome. We've all said it, but we'll say it again here and let you know we are looking forward to working with you. You have a great team to be a part of, and obviously, Brian is, he's at, he's all, at every event, he and Pat, and I think I introduced Brian at the event this past Saturday as a duo, because, you know, Pat is as much involved as he is, so thank you guys for that. Coming up on November the ninth, the Veterans of Foreign Wars are going to be having some people out and about doing the poppy sales, and I think everybody's probably familiar with what these are. These proceeds do go to help the Veterans of Foreign Wars and the Veterans Assistance Programs. And I'd just like to tag on to that and say, for Veterans Day, you know, this is something I think we all need to take time and really think about, and the people that have paid the price to be where we are today. And I'll, I'll leave that there because I think it's so eloquently been mentioned and spoken about already. Steve, thank you for your service as well. My dad turns ninety years old next week, he is a veteran, he's got Parkinson's, he's in an assisted living facility down in Sandestin, Florida. He won't see this, but like U.H.G., I wanna make sure I mention my dad to the world and to the public, I love him, he's an example to me, so happy birthday, Dad, and that's all I have.
Great. Couple of items that I have, Smyrna Bulldogs will celebrate, celebrate a hundred years of pride, tradition, and excellence on Saturday, November the sixteenth. There will be a carnival from two to five, a concert and car show from five to seven, and a bonfire from seven to nine. They are inviting all of Smyrna to come out and celebrate. There are levels if you would like to get involved and sponsor, and I'm sure that is on the Smyrna High School website, but that is November sixteenth from two o'clock to about nine o'clock. Our tree lighting ceremony at the Smyrna Event Center will be on Monday, November the twenty-fifth from six to eight. You can join us for fun at the, as the Town of Smyrna turns on our Christmas lights all around town. It will be at the Event Center, and there will be music and fun along with a special guest. The 2019 Christmas Parade, it is our forty-fifth annual Smyrna Christmas Parade, will take place on Sunday, December the first at two p.m. We'll have people of all ages that will gather along Lowry Street in anticipation of the floats, bands, cars, riding clubs, dancers, and of course, Santa. Our theme this year is a Tennessee Christmas. We talked a little bit, Brian talked a little bit about the food drive that we're doing. We have, over the last four or five years, have asked participants in the parade to bring canned good items as their entry fee. We also asked that the spectators that are there to view the parade bring non-perishable food items, and we have a float in the parade with employees that walk beside the float to collect those non-perishable food items. And then council members have started calling out business leaders and community members about making contributions. I will tell you, as I see somebody out in town, I am asking them to participate, and nobody has told me no yet. And hopefully, by this time next month, I'm hoping I will not even be able to fit in my office because they are being stacked in my office, and we are to the, almost to the front of my desk at this point, so I'm hoping to bring it on around the side and then around the back. So, maybe, maybe the next council meeting, we'll do a picture and show what the office is kinda looking like. If you wanna get involved, we would love to have you be involved in the food drive. Christmas Downtown, a Front Street Christmas, will be Saturday, December the second, seventh. Bring the family downtown for holiday fun. We have hot chocolate, five-dollar carriage rides, free picture print with Santa courtesy of the Smyrna Fire Department, and free smores will be available during the event. We hope to see you there. It is on Front Street from five to seven, and if you need more information, you can contact us here at Town Hall or at the Parks Department. The 2020 Top Gun Night Run, the date has been set, it will be Friday, May the twenty-ninth at eight p.m. There will be more information to come. We will be starting signups in the near future. I will tell you, it sold out last year, I think the same thing will happen this year, probably even faster than last year. So, as soon as we start signups, I would highly recommend that you get signed up. You do not have to be a professional runner to do this. Anybody can do this.
We saw evidence of that, didn't we?
We sure did. And lots of families were involved, and it sure is nice, and I will tell you, it is a really fun family event. The last thing, a couple more things.
You can even cheat, you don't have to finish.
Oh, who'd do that?
Right, Mary Esther?
I wasn't gonna think about that.
Oh, you wouldn't?
I crossed the finish line. I got a medal.
Did you have a tracker on you?
I did.
Did you and Mr. Cole have a tracker on you?
Every one of those, I don't know what those things are called along the way, but the what?
The mile markers.
The mile markers. We counted, we hit each one of those.
I don't know where Steve's coming from.
I don't either. He's got issues with cheating and golf.
He didn't know where you came from at the finish line.
Hey, he's got, he's got issues with golf.
Considering you were way behind me, and then all of a sudden, you're in the finish line.
I just did not wanna see our mayor run over as she crosses Sam Reilly Parkway earlier.
Hey, we, Steve has issues with golf too, with cheating and golf too, so.
I've seen that.
Yeah, so I think he's just trying to blame somebody else, take the eat off him.
Not really.
So, a couple of other things.
And I came in second in the golf tournament this year, didn't I?
I think he cheated there too. SOAC had Fright Nights on Fridays and Saturdays since we our last meeting, and I know it was a huge success, so congratulations on that. Brian and I attended the Women's Veterans Reunion, which was held at Hilltop Park, and it was a wonderful event and a great organization who are behind Women Veterans. I also wanted to let the public know about a bridge naming for Kent Coleman, who is a Smyrna boy. And Kent was in the legislature and did a great job representing the town and did a lot for us, and we will be dedicating a bridge in Kent's name on Friday, November first, and we will have transportation from Smyrna Village, correct?
Yes.
Yes?
By invitation.
Oh, by invitation, sorry. I thought, I saw you had put it out today.
That's a media, for the media to cover it.
For the media to cover, okay. So, if you drive by, if you don't have an invitation and you drive by and you see that there is a group gathered, it is for the naming of the Kent Coleman Bridge, that will be on November first. Tomorrow is our regional meeting on transportation. We will be in Nashville for, the governor will be there, we'll have transportation experts on panels, and Commissioner Bright from T.D.O.T. will also be in attendance. We are in desperate need of talking about transportation here in the Middle Tennessee area, and this event is going to kick that off, and hopefully, new ideas are gonna be brought to the table, and I think it's gonna be pretty exciting. So, that will be at eight fifteen in the morning at the Fris Center. Anything else to come before this four? See nothing, then we are adjourned.